Boy, it got quiet in here quickly.
All right, are we all set? We were running?
We're all running already.
Okay, thanks very much. And thanks to all of you for getting together on such short notice. I know that it's been a crazy time, I think, for a lot of us. But I felt it was important to get our board together. And I want to give you a little bit of background as to how we find ourselves here tonight. You know, I called the special meeting of the V S B A board to really address one question. And that is the role of school boards in decision making for school district operations during this upcoming school year. And due to the importance of the question, I decided I wanted to schedule a full V S B A board meeting rather than just get the feedback of the executive committee. So that's, you know, the reason why I called you all together. Before we get into the question itself, though, I think it's all it's helpful for the board to have a brief history of kind of how we got here. And it started when the governor declared a state of emergency back in March. And most boards relied heavily on their superintendents to address the rapidly changing guidance and conditions as schools essentially closed for in-person instruction and geared up for offering remote instruction. And then on, well, it seems like a long time ago, but it was only about a month and a half or so ago, June 17th, the Vermont Agency of Education, together with the Department of Health, released their guidance document, a strong and healthy start, Safety and Health Guidance for Reopening Schools Fall 2020. And this 25-page document's included in the board packet for tonight. And just to note, it's also currently under revision by those folks that did offer their day. And then on July 15th, the A O E released guidance on hybrid learning during the 2020-2021 school year. And this guidance states that plans for reopening school in the fall should focus on the return to in-person instruction. And then it goes on to say, it's important that each district plan for a certain amount of flexibility to shift school instruction along a continuum of options from full in-person instruction to full remote learning, including a hybrid learning approach that might include both. And then it ends by stating that school districts should consider adopting formal rules and procedures for implementing hybrid learning. These rules and procedures could take the form of formal school board policy and/or administrative procedures promulgated under the superintendent's authority. And then on July 23rd, just last Thursday, the A O E released some guidance on decision making for school district operations during the 2021 school year. And this guidance states that school districts will have three instructional dispositions available to them. One is remote learning, which means school is closed for in-person instruction. Two, hybrid learning, which means school is open for in-person instruction, but some students might receive instruction through remote learning. And then three, in-person learning, school is open and all students receive instruction at school. The July 23rd guidance goes on to say that school boards, and there's a typo in this, it should have been said will, but school boards will have the authority to decide which of these instructional dispositions will be implemented in their schools. School boards should describe the parameters for instructional dispositions through policy or delegate authority to the superintendent to do so through administrative procedures. And then when this got a little bit more complicated for us, so on Sunday morning, three days after the issuance of the decision-making guidance, Secretary French sent an email to Sue that she forwarded to all of you today stating, oh, I meant to ask your group for input on this before we make a revision. Spelling usage error aside, does V S B A have a perspective on the role of boards in deciding reopening plans? See quote below from our decision-making guidance. School boards will have the authority to decide which of these instructional dispositions will be implemented in their schools. School boards should decide the parameters for instructional dispositions through policy or delegate authority to the superintendent to do so through administrative procedure. So for tonight's meeting, what I'd like to do is focus on Dan's question from Sunday, which is, does V S B A have a perspective on the role of boards in deciding reopening plans? So that we can provide a response to him. I personally believe that the response can and should address the timing of his ask and the awkward position that his guidance put on school boards and superintendents throughout the state that were already working hard to develop reopening plans as well as provide guidance for school boards throughout the state. Finally, as background information, I would like to let the board know that the V S B A staff has developed draft model policies which address compliance with the safety and health guidance for reopening schools, the delegation of authority for certain decisions to the superintendent, and requiring the superintendent to develop procedures for options for the mode of learning, you know, whether that's in-person, remote, or hybrid at each grade level. The process to sign up for the different modes of learning, expectations for completion of student work, and other operational details. These, the draft model policies are currently under review by Visbit's attorneys, which is in the process or which is the process all of our model policies undergo before they're issued. So I just want to let board members know that we are working on the draft model policies. Unfortunately, I don't have anything to share with you tonight because we wanted to wait for them to get through attorney review. But we do anticipate having those available soon. So with that as the introduction for tonight's discussion, you know, I'll open it up for, you know, board input on this, you know, essentially on the question is, what do we feel is the appropriate role of school boards that, you know, related to the items that Dan queried us on? Tara?
I just wanted to say that, you know, we've had, as a couple of board members and myself have had this discussion and actually brought it to our superintendent, who, if some of you don't know, is very newly just came here, started three weeks ago from Florida. And he brought it to our legal counsel who advised that we should be letting the superintendent make these decisions, that the board doesn't necessarily need that legal responsibility, was according to our attorney, Paige Pietro Lynn.
Thanks for that. Dan, go ahead.
So I took it upon myself to do a very informal poll of some of the people in the region around here, some school board members around here. And I think most of them, in fact, without exception, they felt like they had been being proactive enough with what with polling of their local communities, working with people who actually clean the schools and would be responsible for that. Nobody seemed uncomfortable with continuing on with with the local boards being the ones to make the decisions. In fact, people said to me things like, you know, I don't want somebody else making a decision. Who knows our buildings better? Who knows our families better, et cetera? So I didn't find a lot of discomfort here, such as was evidenced by, I think, the letter that was written by someone from Harwood expressed anxiety about it. But I didn't see that around here. So I just wanted to say that. And that's, those are my own feelings as well.
Sure. Adrian?
Um, our board has met a couple of times in the last couple of weeks, pieces of it and all of it. And we took no time at all to respond. Our superintendent is Dave Youngs. And he's been our superintendent for a number of years. We have a good working relationship. His building administrators have a good working relationship with him. Our staff has a good working relationship with him. And I don't think there was any question in our board's minds that he had more expertise, more information to be able to address the question of how are we going to do school? Then the 11 people on the board who would be playing catch-up at all times. And I personally do not want to be the one that at nine or 10 o'clock at night when someone gets a test result to try and grab together, you know, an emergency board meeting to say, hey, we're remote tomorrow. I think the decisions this year have to be made on a far more nimbler basis. They have to be fast. They have to be, you know, well, well thought out and and well backed up by fact. And I personally am much more comfortable doing that, giving our superintendent that task.
Dan, before I go back to you, let me get a couple of new voices and then I'll make sure to come back to you. David, go ahead.
So I've been giving this a lot of thought as well. And but functioning in a vacuum, not really talking to anybody except a little bit with Jim Salzgiver. But it seems to me that one of the problems here is, is that all of a sudden, it seems like everything is now being given back to the boards for local control. And I'm used to that up until four or five years ago. But I don't think that's accurate either. I don't think we should have given up that we always had some local control. We needed it. And yet there should always be some state involvement. So I started thinking, one of the, one size doesn't fit all. So we don't want the state telling us what to do. But there are certain values that must be stated upfront that are going to seem obvious to everybody, at least the ones I came up with. And that includes safety, health, optimal learning, and appropriate adaptation to each locality or the context. So what that means is that I think the state should commit to providing certain resources to make sure that there's enough P P E so that people can stay safe and that there's enough testing so that people can stay healthy, that there's enough technology access so that if schools have to go off, you know, if schools have to close, then kids have the best chances to survive. I mean, I think we need to make sure, push back a little bit, make sure the state is making a commitment to fill in the gaps that are financial and resource gaps and funding gaps that are going to result from this. Yes, it's, I think it's very good that we should make decisions according to our local context. But I also think we need to have sufficient support and funding to provide the resources necessary to adapt to these uncommonly difficult and different times.
Thanks, David. Mark, Mark Cliff?
Um, I would hope Heather might validate me on this, but our superintendent was very forward-thinking, I believe. And we had a lot of discussions about what's going to work for the parents and could we create a model that could encompass the spectrum of the needs? So we're looking at the hybrid. And all that said, I think the values were rolling along pretty well. But all of a sudden, the superintendent has a ton of, a ton of angst about the governance issue. So I think if we can come up with something tonight, it would be really worthwhile to a lot of parties. And he's all of a sudden sending out messages and gotten really nervous about responsibilities, accountability. And so this is a good, a timely discussion. And if we can nail this down a little bit tonight, I think that'd be very helpful.
Jim?
Heather, are you in agreement?
I
Yeah, so I do agree. And I think our superintendent, who's Mark Tucker, has been on top of this since the very beginning and has kept all of the boards in the loop and has asked for board chair feedback. Cal Co-op has scheduled a special meeting for tomorrow night, and I anticipate that we'll be voting to, you know, give the superintendent the authority to continue doing what he's doing. I don't think anyone on my Cal Co-op board wants to step up and take responsibility for what's going on. And I agree with Adrian. We need something in place, someone that's nimble, that can make those decisions at 10 o'clock at night. And we as boards, we know we can't do that.
Jim Salzgiver?
Yeah, I think, you know, one of my concerns was actually just reading the specific message that Dan sent, which, which, you know, in, in our area, we, we've been moving towards policy governance, which actually means that, you know, that essentially the delegation of the superintendent is extremely broad. And, you know, but we have an odd situation in that we have really two operating districts. One already has policy governance policies in place. The other is still in process. So we actually, we've, you know, my concern is that the message from Dan was very specific on it's the board's responsibility unless they take the exact right steps to delegate that to the superintendent. So it was almost kind of like a warning that make sure you do this correctly. I think, you know, it's, we're trying to take the steps to ensure that, you know, that that it's properly delegated. But I think, you know, it's like, you know, what Mark said on, on the, you know, the superintendent gets nervous because do they actually have the authority? And, you know, one of our concerns was if you, if you don't have that, you know, a clear documented delegation of that type of authority to the superintendent, it puts them in a very difficult position. Because if the board has to, you know, the board could improve an opening plan now. And then in two weeks, when it has to adjust, does the board have to come back and approve it again? And I think that's why I think these policies, these model policies that are being developed, you know, if, if essentially, you know, one of them says, you know, during the state of emergency or something, you know, the board has decided to delegate the ability to do that just with reporting back or something, that, that would be really helpful. I think, I'm just concerned that this was a little too specific of a request that, okay, here's the language as far as, you know, who has the authority? And just make sure you guys are all following the rules. And I, you know, and that's not exactly terribly helpful at this point in time. But, but I, but I'm, from our perspective, we're just trying to make sure that we're giving our superintendent what they need to be comfortable. Our superintendent is brand new too, you know, but was our assistant. And to make them feel fully comfortable that the board's backing them and they have the ability to act nimbly, as everybody's saying.
Go ahead. Judy, go ahead.
To David's point, I think if there could be some pushback that what we're getting in our area is, I think our superintendent is doing a fantastic job, but our children are spread out over multiple schools. And if each school district is doing something different, it puts parents in a, in a very difficult, as well as teachers who are parents in a very difficult place. So whether we're looking at regional guidance or some parameters that would come from the state. On, we had one, a board chair that Michelle and I spoke with, you know, if case numbers are under X, then the recommendation is this, or some parameters that schools could work with within a region. But, but right now, everyone around us is doing something different. And that's difficult. Thank you.
Let me go. Amy?
So my S U board met last night and we probably, it, the meeting started at 6:30 and we talked till about 9:30 about this. And the conversation was, we would get to almost a point where we were, someone made the motion to delegate the authority to the superintendent. But then someone from one of the, so there are three districts. Someone from one of the districts would say, but before we do anything, we have to know exactly what the hybrid plan is going to be. As in, what's the remote learning going to look like? And until I know exactly what the remote learning is going to look like, I'm not approving anything. And trying to bring that back and say, you know what, we don't, we don't know what's going to happen. We only know what we know now. We've had a task force working all summer long that teachers, administrators, help people from the area. But then two of the schools send their kids all over the place. It's just, it's all over the place. And it feels so so huge. And there are some in a couple of the districts that don't think we should open at all. And how could we even be so irresponsible as to open at all?
Thanks, Amy. Let me do, I'll do George and then Kevin. I think you still have muted George.
Thank you. I don't want to take away Nancy's big point about worry about opening and at what level to open. But along with what she and Judy have said, is there, I would ask French, is there any effort to coordinate hybrid openings between neighboring districts? Some kind of regionalization? Has someone mentioned? Because we've got administrators, teachers, and staff who may be in school on Tuesday and Thursday. The next, next district over, that's the day for their kids to be home. That could be a potential problem in getting daycare. So what is the state's outlook and effort on that?
Thanks. Kevin?
Um, I just, I see Colleen timidly putting her hand up, and I'm not sure if you're seeing it, Neil, or not, but I think she's got something to say. I'm not, at this point, going to say something myself.
I'm doing my best trying to keep an eye on these 23 different squares here. So sometimes I miss it. So if I, if I'm missing you, please speak up. But Colleen, you have the floor. Although you're still muted. You're muted, though, Colleen.
I just said some brilliant words. I'm sorry. Muting. So I'm using my blue hand in the participants section. So I appreciate what others have brought forward. And Kevin, thank you for making some space for me to just say something briefly. But I just want to reiterate the points about being able to, for our districts to be nimble so that decisions can be made as circumstances change. And I just see boards getting in the middle of it as really slowing down a process. We have a small board, 12 members. And we have been talking every week for hours. And our board is definitely not on the same page. And I just cannot see that we would open this up to the broader community to try to influence board members on different perspectives, because our community is definitely all over the place on their perspectives. Some want to have the schools fully open. Some don't see that they're ready. But I just want to go back to the point of who are the experts in this situation? It's not the board members. We can be experts about policy. And I think having a policy that gives authority to the superintendent to delegate, designate, make decisions, whatever, about school openings, I think that would be a really valuable policy. But I really don't see boards being in a place where they have the knowledge and expertise to make decisions about schools opening. We're just, we're not in the middle of it. And, you know, we don't make decisions when we have a snow day. So why would we make a decision about different models of school design? And the other piece I would give back to Secretary French is, I agree, Neil, I appreciate your interest in making sure that there's a note about timing. When I saw that message come through, I thought that the state was really abdicating its role in helping coordinate what's going on in the school. And I've also heard that the state is not collecting the different plans. And so that was the other piece I would bring into the conversation is ask for the state to collect the different plans and encourage the continuation of the superintendent's collaborating regionally. From, from what I've heard from our superintendent, Elaine Pinkney, there's been incredible collaboration among superintendents. And why we would not continue to support that work baffles me. But, thank you.
Thanks. And thanks for the tip. I've now got my eye on the participants. I see that Nancy has had her hand raised for quite some time. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you. We are obviously in a little bit different situation because we only have essentially the one school system that we have to report to or that reports back to us. And we have been operating under policy governance for a number of years now for our board. So we do have complete trust in Tom, who is our superintendent, and he's been here for a number of years. When I, when I saw this stuff coming through from Sue today, I thought, are you kidding me? I mean, we've had people, our people have been working ever since they shut down the school or closed schools to be in person there to try to figure out how we were going to be opening and make sure that everybody was going to be safe and everybody was going to be taken care of. And now all of a sudden, they're going to throw it back to us who have not really been out on the front lines and talking to the people. Tom has kept us very informed. We've been able to ask him questions. But I am all for, for the superintendent to be the, to be the one to make the decision. And in our particular situation, in our school board, Tom, we do give him that authority and we have, we will continue to do so. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Nancy. Michelle?
Sorry, it took me a sec to find the mute button. So I've talked with a couple board chairs and a superintendent in the last couple of days. And the commonality among them all is that there's just not enough coordinated leadership from the state. And this doesn't entirely go to the school board versus superintendent authority issue, which I feel like the school boards are not super concerned about because I haven't heard from a school board that. Well, I guess we did, when Judy and I talked with one chair this morning, who was concerned that her board might not entirely get behind the superintendent. And that is going to be a frustration and a struggle for that particular chair. But one big issue that came up is the need for guidance from the state on when children are sick in any way, like when do they need to leave school? Under what circumstances can they return to school? We need guidance on that, which I guess comes from department more than from A O E. But we definitely need guidance from A O E on schedules to, because that's going to be an equity issue if we wind up with, you know, a lack of childcare because of the disparate schedules and kids not getting adequate access. So one, yeah, anyway, more leadership from the state would be much appreciated. And not more abdication of responsibility from the state.
Thanks, Michelle. We do Mark Schaubert?
Hi. So in speaking to our superintendent prior to this meeting, I, I asked him whether there was any guidance that he would want prior to this meeting, I, I asked him whether there was any guidance that he would want to receive from the state at this point. And he said, given the amount of time and work that they've been putting into this, unless the state were to say everyone's going remote and remote only, that any guidance that would be handed down would probably interfere with the plans that have already been created and all the work that has been, that has gone in, working with public health officials, working with the teachers, working with the union, all the, all the janitors, et cetera, et cetera. So that was his, his reaction. I also spoke to him about the, the regionalization of, of guidance, so to speak. And what he said was that he's been working with all the superintendents in the region. And what they've been finding is that the schools and the districts are just too different. And that the plans need to be too personalized to collaborate on great, in great detail. So I would have some concerns if we were to ask for regionalization guidance. I think that would greatly affect at least southeastern Vermont. So that's it.
Thanks, Mark. How about Mark Nielsen?
Hi, good evening. We've, I'm up here in Memorial North. Kate Gallagher is the superintendent. She's been doing an amazing job making sure that our facilities, our nurses, all those folks are engaged and making sure we get things ordered up and well ahead of schedule here so far. Our board has been basically just backing her, having suggestions and asking different questions that the various community members have. Probably the biggest complaint that we have up here, I think I'll echo what a lot of you folks have already said is we feel there could be a lot more guidance from the state. Instead of a very generic letter going out saying, well, we'll do something like this. Maybe be a little bit more specific. And that's where we're at. We're, we're kind of moving forward, keeping everything going and taking a look at things as we, as they change. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thanks. Tara?
So I just wanted to say that with my earlier comments, we fully support our superintendent, our administration and all they're doing. And the concern for us, and I forwarded this to Neil and Sue on Friday, was the, some of the V S B A board members were CC'd on a letter that Williston, someone from the Williston School District sent out and copied Mark Levine and Dan French. Was Dan's response to that was that if you don't like the way the schools are opening, go complain to your school board. And that's where our boards were like, whoa, why are they coming to complain to us when we've charged the administration? And the message should continue to come from the administration and not, no. And especially to that, the message was being sent out by Dan essentially. Because, because I don't think that's what's happening.
Thanks. Is there anybody that wants to weigh in that hasn't had an opportunity to weigh in? Clarence, go ahead.
Am I unmuted now? Very good. I think we ought to probably give the authority to the superintendent, but I, I like to be informed about decisions that are coming down the pipe. Our, our new unified union district is just two elementary schools that are K six. We get along pretty, pretty fine and we share a lot of things and things, a lot of good things. The supervisor reunion board met, the executive committee didn't even meet. I don't know just how they came up with it, but the superintendent came up with a report that he gave to the SU board last week that wanted them to approve in-person instruction four days a week and remote one day a week for all schools in the district, including ours. And our board hadn't even heard of that yet. And I said, I couldn't support that. I said, there's only three of us here. There's four more board members that at least ought to have a chance to discuss this before we vote to approve it. And we will be meeting the first part of August. We meet the first Wednesday of the month. I realize that's late, but if they were going to, if he was going to propose something like this, he should have given a call saying, we need a special meeting to talk about this. You know, I need your input before I move too far ahead. The board might agree with that and might agree to, to give, give it to him. But there's a lot of considerations that, they did that because of the high schools in the district that are another unified union district. Their needs get better that way. I'm not so sure that this is going to be good for our, for our school district. Then on top of it, we haven't touched on the governor's executive order today that says nothing's going to start till the eighth of September. If I, if I read, if, if the news report was right, I couldn't listen to the, I think. So we just got, we can have two weeks added to the timeframe to put these things in place, but I have a problem with a remote day if we get, if we can help it. Because in our area, we have, one of our schools has one of the highest percentages of free and reduced. We have kids that are hungry and aren't fed unless they're in school. That's the point of it. And not make a big deal of it, but that's got to be taken care of. And if, if we ran a solid session instead of a remote that day, that day, we could still have the, they're usually Wednesday afternoons for district-wide training. And I don't disagree with that. But I am disagreeing to make Wednesday a remote day for the kids in the morning to do that in the afternoon. And I think if it's going to be changing resources around to make some of this happen because of the pandemic, that is a board decision on how you're going to reallocate lines within your budget. You ought to at least talk about that. You know, if we have to hire more staff to check temperatures, I'd like to know how some of this stuff is going to get done. It's fine to have the superintendent go ahead and put the plan together. But we're the ones that are going to get the call when it, when it doesn't work perfectly. And we've got, in our case, tax bills are going to land here shortly. And it's going to dawn people just exactly what they approved, that budget they approved, what it, what it's going to reflect in their tax bill for a big heat. And we're going to take enough heat about that. And the perception out there, right or wrong, is going to be, oh, now they're only going to teach, you know, 80% of the time? And they want this increase? You'll never pass another budget. We're, we're right up against that excess spending threshold to start with. Because of our limited class sizes, the only advantage we have with limited class sizing is we can do the social spreading in the room. So we can have in-person learning and not have to do it two days. We're very lucky so that I personally, at least would like the board to discuss that and take, so we might take advantage of some of the things that we have an advantage for. So I'm in favor of boards being allowed to do their jurisdiction, but give the superintendents the guidance they want. The fact that the board hasn't, it hasn't been discussed with them yet. And it's a new superintendent. I think it was a, not a good play on his part to try to just ignore the board and go around them. We're a board that's operated for years on not micromanaging, but keeping, but knowing what's going on in our school. So when the public asks us a question, we can answer it truthfully and honestly as to board and factually. And I don't believe, I hear, give it to the superintendent. I don't want the day-to-day stuff, but I do want input. And if we need to rearrange the budget to pay for some of these things so they can, they can happen, that's what the board ought to be doing right now. Just like, just because we put a stakeholder in the budget of 3% for salary increases. We're in negotiations and we aren't using numbers that quite that high. I'll leave it at that. Neil?
Clarence. Don, one second. I want to go to Lori first because she had her hand up and then I'll come to you.
So I want to state first of all that I wondered if anyone else feels thrown under the bus because I feel totally thrown under the bus. We're supposed to do, I mean, he, he gave us this overall guidance and we're supposed to do local control. But oh, by the way, every single one of you, school board people are supposed to be making these decisions. So that sounds like unilaterally, he's making these decisions for the entire state. But all the rest of this stuff is supposed to be hours and hours alone, meaning the school districts. I wondered also, does Dan French have the authority to make a blanket statement about what all school boards are required to opine on? Does he have that authority? Does, does anyone know that?
Say the question again?
Essentially, he's saying the can gets kicked down the road until the school board, when we're talking about opening plans for school. I know with my board, everything goes through the superintendent and then comes to the board. And we have tried for years to keep it that way. Now Secretary French is saying, oh, no, no, no. Every single school board is going to have to have a policy for opening, reopening schools and who is responsible for it. Even though every single school board is probably already working on it. Where does he get the authority to make a blanket statement so that all school boards have to have a policy? Where does he get off saying that the school boards are the ones that are responsible for all this?
I, just if I could, since, you know, Dan was our superintendent, we know him pretty, David and I know him pretty well. My, my guess, you know, is that, you know, I, I think it's been a little while since I read in detail the statutes associated with school boards, but, but my, my guess is, is what he's saying is pretty consistent with what's in statute. About the school board is responsible, except to the extent that they delegate to the superintendent. And then they're responsible because they delegated to the superintendent.
Did you have anything else, Lori, that you wanted to, where'd you go? Okay, Don?
First of all, I want to thank you Neil and Sue for putting this special meeting together. I think this is a very important topic and should, the full board should have an opportunity to express their feelings. Locally, we're working on this again tomorrow night. I would say that Clarence made a statement that is probably indicative of where we are. And that is that the board wants to be informed. I don't think we want to micromanage. We don't want to make a decision at 10 o'clock at night. That's our administrative team, our superintendent. But certainly we want an email or some kind of information coming our way so we don't get blindsided. And that's the way we've been working, so I don't see it changing. If we have a frustration and it's expressed by boards and administrators is that there doesn't appear to be a game plan at the state level. I think there've been multiple ones, but it's, it's just kind of frustrating to see our administrators work as long and as hard as they have only to take and get a memo or a notice or a press conference saying, this is what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. And this is what we're going to hand to you. So that's all I have to say on it. It's been a very good learning experience. I'll have some ideas for our meeting tomorrow night.
Thanks. Going through quick, I don't see any other, ooh, I'm looking here. Yeah, I want to check. I was looking for hands over in the participant side. Now I look for actual physical hands on the screen and Dan, I will give you, go.
Yeah, thanks Neil. I mostly wanted to agree with most of the people who have spoken after me. I had said that I, I wanted it, that I felt like our school boards were in a good position, but I didn't mean to imply that they were working in a vacuum. A member of the administration that hasn't been mentioned tonight are the principals. And I think you'll be able to tell that Mark Schaubert and I are part of the same supervisor reunion because our SU, our superintendent has been working with all the principals on what they feel is the best thing to happen in their buildings. So I guess I would agree with Clarence and Don that the boards need to be active participants in this. But, but not to be the, to do it solely on their own. So, and I wanted to agree with Adrian on that as well.
David, go ahead.
So I'm hearing at least three things. So to help, to help organize a kind of response, if we need to do that, there seem to be three basic things and maybe I don't have them right, but I'm giving you, giving us all a starting point. It sounds first of all, like we all agree that we should give operational decision-making authority to the superintendents. Something along those lines seems to be something we should state. Second, and this isn't as well articulated, but one person talked about collecting the different plans. I think that we should have something that says that we support collaboration discussions between the superintendents statewide, facilitating and sharing best practices. That seemed to be the direction going with that comment. And the third comment that I had goes to, or suggestion for something we might say goes to my original statement, which is suggesting that the state create funds, make resources available, provide access to things like medic, expert medical consultations. And you could list all the things, but, but there, there are going to be, I think this, every school system may have a different need, but I think there will be a need for additional resources and access to funds and that sort of things to facilitate the, this entire process. So I think we should say something about that. So those are my three, three comments and suggestions that I'm getting out of this discussion. I hope that's helpful.
It is David. Thank you very much for that. Michelle?
One thing that I forgot to mention from a conversation with another board was that they said it would be, one thing that V S B A could do that would be really helpful would be to identify, would be if V S B A could create guidance for school boards as to how the boards can be most useful at this moment. You know, what is an appropriate role for the board in navigating this crisis? And, you know, maybe some examples of what, you know, how is the ideal board handling their relationship with their superintendent and, and supporting their community and their administration as they navigate this?
Thanks, Michelle. And I think in part, that's where we're headed with this discussion, right? And I, I think, you know, to the points that David just made, I think top of the list, what I'm hearing collectively is this group saying that boards delegating to a large extent, you know, decisions about the reopening of schools to their superintendents. And not only that folks feel comfortable with that, but beyond that, they feel that that's like, that, that is the, the right way to approach this at this point in time. And so I think I'm hearing a coalescing around that point. Let me go to Colleen.
I'll be quick. So David, thank you. I really agree with your list. I think it's very helpful and you did a nice job of synthesizing. The one other piece I would want to make sure that we're clear about, and it's, I'm going back to Clarence's point about concern in food safety issues for students in our state. And one thing that our district is doing, Champlain Valley School District, we are, and this came from the board, asking for operations to include providing six meals a week or, you know, six days a week of meals or whatever it is, but making sure that no kid in our community is hungry when they're not in school. So when there's a day that a student's not going to be in school, they're going home the day before with food for that day that he's, that child's going to be working at home. So someplace within this, I think either it's a message to the state about ensuring that there's funding to support some of the basic needs for kids, such as food safety, and just encouraging other boards to consider distribution of food for when students are not in school.
Kevin?
I didn't solicit a whole lot of information or request for information before tonight's meeting, but I did talk briefly with our, our board, direct board. I'm in Addison, so we actually have three different unified districts. But the, the, the quick, the quick response was, don't for, you know, we're, we're here to serve kids and their, and their educational needs and to a degree their social economic needs as well. So, so whatever the process is, is we, we can't forget about what our goal is or what our charter is, and that is serving kids, students. So, you know, the, and it kind of weaves in a little bit about with the meals and stuff, but there's a lot of discussion tonight that is kind of abstract to that. And I don't think we want to, once we make a position, we want to make sure that we are making these positions based on what's best for the students. The, the other comment I, and I'll make is there was a little bit of commentary about districts working in a broader measure or capacity with the neighboring districts or something, but the Champlain Valley superintendents, if you will, I guess, I don't know how tightly knit the organization is, but anyway, all the superintendents from Addison County north up through Franklin and Grand Isle got together and deliberated and came up with a uniform policy as far as return to school is concerned. So that type of activity is going on in certain parts of the state, and it may be a model for other areas to look at.
Thank you, Kevin. Looking around if anybody, Dan, go ahead.
So I agree with David's three points. I disagree with yours, Neil. You seem to feel like the consensus of our meeting tonight is that, is that we should opt for all boards to delegate responsibility to the supervisor reunion. And I'm not sure that is the consensus. It might be, but my point is allow boards to delegate to the supervisor reunion through their policymaking, but not suggest that they do necessarily.
Thanks, Dan. I guess the point that I would make there is I think that first piece where you said allow boards to do that, I mean, that already exists under statute, right? And, and part of the reason why I wanted to get this board together tonight is because I think what's beneficial to board members as a whole, what I'm hearing coming in for, as questions to the V S B A is, is a request for guidance. It's not necessarily a request for clarification on statute and what boards are allowed to do, but it's more been along the lines of, you know, this is an extraordinary time. I'm having a hard time navigating what my role as a school board member and what the role of the school board is, given the context of the pandemic and the reopening of schools. And so one of the things that I was hoping to do tonight was to leverage the input of this body to see if we could develop guidance that would be sent out on behalf of the V S B A. And so that's why I'm trying to take the consensus of the voices that I'm hearing and the comments that are being made tonight. And, you know, what I'd like to do is see if we can nail it down, whether that's in the form of a motion, or whether that's an agreement on, you know, maybe a set of bullet points or principles that this board could agree to, that then I can, you know, hand over to Sue and staff to start to craft maybe some guidance that we hope would be useful to school boards across the state. Clarence, go ahead.
I, just, in our particular area, in our particular district, we have a golden opportunity to, to meet the safety guidelines and have in-person learning. And I don't want to lose that if, if we don't have to. And I don't think that's, that's being considered with the plan they put together at this point. All I'm saying, there's a lot of ramifications like Colleen spoke about, of other things that gotta be addressed if you're going to go remote, is we have some kids that just didn't sign on to the remote. It just lost a lot of area, the ground this spring, that's gotta be made up. That's just a fact. So I'd like to have some input. I'd like to have those things considered in that. A lot of districts, if they're the same in regionally and it makes sense to put it together, great. But in our case, where you're different size and different shape school district, it makes sense to do things a little differently. And you can give the authority to do it to the superintendent, but I think they'd need the guidance from the local board on what they would like done. I, I'm not saying take everything away from the superintendent, but I want, I want some input there because we have to manage the budget, is the other piece that I, that I am very, that I always very concerned about. And there was one other thing I wanted to remember when I was asking to speak again, but we'll, we'll, I just, I don't want to grant total authority to the supervisor reunion. In some cases, that's the right thing to do, but, oh, I know what it was. Regional superintendents in our area got together many years ago and decided we'd have a unified school calendar, so there'd be no problem. Everybody in the district would adhere to the same calendar, so that they'd have the same days off and any parents and kids in different schools and whatnot would work out. Well, somehow that goes by the wayside. The tech center is now starting two weeks earlier than, than Mill River was planning on starting. Pulteys half and half somewhere in the McCorry Valley, I mean, in the middle. That's like, that's like it just fell apart. I, I would think they need to be putting more of that stuff together instead of letting something as simple as that fall apart. They can't get all that together and kids are getting caught in the middle. We just have too many kids that have too many problems that are even going to fall farther through the cracks by having a remote day with nobody at home, because mom and dad gotta work, or else the kids aren't going to eat as much as they are now. That's a fact of life for a lot of parents that we have to deal with.
Thanks, Don. I'm looking around, I think, Don, you have a hand up? You're on mute still, Don.
Okay, just to keep, continue this discussion, which I'm finding very interesting, very informative. I'd just like to throw out an idea, and it's not in the form of a motion, but I think it would be helpful if we had a statement like, V S B A encourages local school boards to clearly delineate the operational functions delegated to the superintendent and the process for keeping board members informed. I'm hearing boards want to be informed. I, I think that's important. Boards shouldn't micromanage. People use the word nimble. Certainly superintendent's going to be much more nimble than a board. But I think if we put out something that's like, not a directive, but an encouragement, which we think is a good practice, that, you know, have a board meeting and, and work it out with your superintendent. These are the operational functions that are yours and you, and that we don't need to be involved. But I think on the same thing that Clarence said, in a timely manner, the board members need to know what the superintendent's done. So that's just an idea to.
Thanks, Don. And I think with that, I'm going to see if we can have one of our V S B A staff possibly do a screen share and we could start to put up some language that maybe we can all take a look at and work with, maybe in an effort to get to either a, a motion or some other statement of guidance that we could provide to Sue and I and the others on the staff to use to then develop the SBA guidance.
I just texted Susan to see if she could start a document that could be shared.
I can make Susan a co-host, so she can share a screen.
Yes.
I have a modif, modern, sort of not great connection, so probably better if Carrie can share it.
Okay.
But I'm happy to, I'm happy to set it up, but Carrie, can you do the screen share?
Yeah, but I don't have your screen, so.
I'm going to share the document with you.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
Thanks.
And Susan, if you could share it with me also, I'm happy to swipe on it. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. I would have done it myself, but it's a little hard to do that and then watch for hands being raised and trying to facilitate the conversation at the same time. Lori, did you have something?
I do. I'm really stuck on this. Secretary French making an overarching statement that school boards need to do this. And I'm, I understand Jim says that there's plenty of room in statute that allows him to do that. I'm wondering is there, if there is any precedent for this? And, and are, and the other question is, are we setting up precedent for this? Could he come in and say, oh, so school boards need to make sure that all transportation is paid for in the budget? Or school boards need to implement equity, professional development, or et cetera, et cetera? Are we headed down a slippery slope? His language in, in the July 15th document for guidance on hybrid learning is, we're supposed to do a lot. School boards are responsible for a lot in that manifesto, for lack of a better term. I, I'm just really uncomfortable and I don't understand the precedent for it.
Unfortunately, I, you know, I can't, I'm unable to speak to intention when we're talking about, you know, the, the document that, that Dan issued. You know, I, I do think that one of the things that this body could do was, you know, speak to concerns that we have regarding, you know, how he issued the guidance, the fact that he didn't check with us first, the fact that after it was issued, then he came back and asked whether or not we would support it, that the, the process involved with what he did, you know, I think put, you know, a lot of us in a very awkward position. You know, a, a lot of districts across the state that were involved in trying to put together their reopening plans and had delegated that authority and a lot of good work was being done by the superintendent, to have the superintendent wake up one day and find that he's now needing to deal with a curve ball that was thrown at him by saying that now boards are responsible for all of this. And, you know, I, I think in a lot of districts that have, you know, good boards with good relationships with their superintendents, that wasn't necessarily that big of a deal. But maybe in other districts where the relationships might not be as well-formed, it, it might be a far different, more difficult conversation. And the fact that the secretary, you know, made things more difficult, I think, rather than helped to alleviate any problems that we're having in trying to get to a reopening plan, I think was unfortunate. Go, Lori.
Can I, yeah, sorry. Thank you, Neil. I completely agree with you and you're a heck of a lot better politician than I am. Thank you. So one of the things that I heard from my board chair, and, and we're part of the CBU Grand Isle, what Kevin was talking about earlier, where the superintendents all got together, is that he's very concerned that our board needs, it may be forced to vote on something like a policy, and we are really looking to the V S B A to create that policy. If that's what the Secretary French is actually saying, we need to have a policy, we'd really appreciate the V S B A coming up with that to help us.
Yep, and so we, we are working on those. I, I might turn it over briefly to Sue. We don't, so we don't have anything final to share with you just yet, because it is still under attorney review. We run all of our model policies by attorneys in Visbit, just to make sure that everybody's okay with things. But I don't know, Sue, if you wanted to speak to any, you know, more specifics around the model policies that we're working on.
Sure. So we have two drafts right now. One of them is one that basically delegates the authority to the superintendent, as many of you have been referring to. It also requires the superintendent to keep the board informed, which is another part that, that I've, something else that I've heard a lot about tonight. So I'm glad that we were sort of anticipating what you, what boards might be wanting. And the other one is more specifically focused on the modes of instruction that would be provided during the state of emergency. And there's some sort of technical information about provision of a minimum number of instructional hours and the ways that that can be reached, that's covered in that draft. And also a requirement in that draft for the superintendent to develop procedures that would handle some of the operational details of hybrid learning or remote learning, such as which options are going to be available for which grades, in-person, remote and hybrid. And then process for signing up for the different modes of instruction and expectation for completion of student work, provision of educational supports that would be happening with the different modes of instruction, how special education services would be provided. And also, to a point that people have made, a process for sharing information about student status with the school nutrition program, so that they are able to provide meals at home or at school. So those are the two model policies that, that we have drafts of, and as Neil said, they are under review with Visbit's attorneys. I'm really hoping that we'll have, you know, final feedback by the end of this week.
Thank you, Sue. Adrian? Thank you, Sue. Adrian.
I just wanted to, I guess not really put out a word of caution. I know my district, we don't have a policy per se delegating authority to our superintendent. We all feel comfortable having told him that that was the intention that we had on how he is to do his job. There was no formal vote. And honestly, I sort of hope the V S B A doesn't come out saying that it's a, you know, not, you know, putting it in the column of almost required. I mean, sometimes when you bring up these conversations on a full board, everybody felt comfortable sending, in our board, the superintendent said, hey, this advice came out from Dan French. How do you guys feel about this? If I have your, you know, you're you're okay, just on an emailed basis, each one of you individually telling me whether or not you're okay with it, I'll know whether or not I have support on my board to continue the way I'm doing it. And I think if we had a big, long conversation, we might make it more complicated than it needs to be. Sometimes just leaving things alone is not a terrible thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Kevin?
This conversation has been pretty enlightening. We operate underneath policy governance and we struggle sometimes about how far along we are on that path, but we already have procedures in place that tell the superintendent, you've got to go out and come up with these ends, if you will. And then there's a set of executive limitations and, and within, when I read French's thing saying the school board's got to deal with this or delegate it to the superintendent, my thought was, is well, we've done that. We've set up a level of policy governance. And even though it doesn't specifically say, okay, you're going to take care of COVID pandemic, it says you're going to take care of the, the, the school system and you're going to, you're expected to come up with these results as far as performance is concerned. And I think that goes back a lot to my prior comment when I polled our chair. Her concern was whatever we do or whatever we say or however we handle ourselves, that we need to keep in mind that we're all here to serve the students, you know? I mean, we're, so I'm guessing, so what I'm trying to say, I think, is our board is not hung up on the the semantics of French's discussion to try to make boards or their administrations making the decisions as opposed to, well, this is supposed to the state doing it unified for across the state.
Thanks, Kevin. Mark Schaber?
Some can be honest. I'm sitting here listening to everybody's comment, comments, and to some extent, I feel confused. I read what Secretary French sent out and I didn't see any requirements in there beyond what at least our board does on a regular basis. We don't necessarily call it policy governance, but our superintendent brings things to the board. We talk about them. Sometimes there are votes on them. Sometimes there aren't votes. But in essence, we have through conversations over the last few months delegated this responsibility to him. And I guess I didn't see what Secretary French sent as requiring a policy. You know, it says you can either, the board can either do through policy dictate what the district is going to do or through administrative procedure, delegate to the superintendent. And I guess I'm sort of feeling like I'm not sure what the end result is that we're trying to get to here. Because I feel like, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Clarence? You're muted, Clarence. If you're talking, we can't hear you. There you go.
Okay. I was just answering Laurie. I get frustrated as she does with some of this stuff that comes down. But I, we have to all stop and remember that we only exist because the state of Vermont says we can exist. It's not the other way around. So, a lot of this stuff, can Dan do this? Yeah, he can do damn well whatever he pleases because he's, he's the boss. He's got the statute on his side. I'm glad he asks once in a while and makes some suggestions. I don't particularly like the way the structure is. Like, learned over the years, you have to live with it, and that's how it is. So, you know, we're creatures of the state. The state gets to do whatever they want. A local school district has no authority other than what's granted to them in those green books by the state of Vermont. It's, it's that simple. We don't have to like it, but we have to work within it. Get off my soapbox.
Thanks, Clarence. And just to follow up on Mark Schaber's comment, you know, I think, so the good news here is I think what I'm hearing is in a lot of cases, especially on this board, the, the, those discussions, the mechanisms that your boards have put in place, the relationships that you have with your superintendents are working as they should, right? You guys are in a good place and you're able to work this out. I think where Dan's guidance caused some problems were in the parts of the state where the relationship between board and superintendent wasn't working well. And I think in some cases, there were some superintendents that were working through reopening plans, making decisions as to how their school districts would handle it based on some maybe official or unofficial authority that was given to them back in March when everything started to go really, really crazy, right? And chances that boards didn't necessarily have to sort of step in and, and opine on things because there, there wasn't enough time to do that. Something needed to happen and it needed to happen quick and superintendents took over. And I think what we see in some parts of the state is as this pandemic thing keeps going, right, as it, as it keeps getting longer, there's more and more time and opportunity in here for boards and maybe even some superintendents to reflect on what they're doing and how they're doing it. And I think in the scenario, in the cases where things weren't working well, Dan's request or initially his guidance and then coming back to the V S B A and say, hey, what do you think about this? Put our organization into a position where we now sort of feel like we need to respond. Right? And what is the response from the V S B A? And what sort of guidance do we want to offer? You know, in particular to those boards out there and those groups that may be having a hard time with this. So not Mark Schaber's board, but there are others out there that may not be having as easy of a time about things as you are. All right, so we've got a shared document right now. And a couple of things I would like to do. Two things. One is if you do have something that you want to say, if you can use the little blue hand in the participant window now, because I have less visibility of actual faces to see if you're just actually waving at me. The second thing is, is David, can I go back to you? Could you articulate again, and I know it's been a while, so maybe you've forgotten it, but the three points that you made before? Because I'd like to see if we could get them down in this document as a basis for, you know, see if we can get to a a position for the V S B A.
Okay.
Neil, if David has any problems remembering exactly what those were, I think I wrote them down. So, but go ahead, David.
Well, yeah, I saw you assiduously scribbling away. So, so you can correct me or improve me. So this is the starting point. Give operational decision-making authority to superintendents. And you can add more to that about school openings and all the rest. That was the first point, and we can flesh that out. The second point was support collaboration and discussions between superintendents statewide, facilitating and sharing best practices.
What was the last part, facilitating?
Best practice and sharing best practices. And the last one, again, you can take these or not, but the last one was create funds, make resources available, and provide access to expert expertise or expert assistance or expert knowledge such as medical consultations, et cetera. Technology. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Can I just spend a little bit of time on that first one? And I want to get, if folks want to weigh in, Dan, go ahead.
Neil, do you want to sort of take notes as people speak and put them underneath number one, or?
Yeah, I think that might be helpful.
Okay. So let me return to something that I had said a few minutes ago relative to that number one. I don't think, I think there are a substantial number of people on this meeting tonight who are simply saying, we don't want to be told that we need to give operational decision-making authority to superintendents either because we feel that it's working well or we want good input and feedback or whatever. So I'd like to see that one modified so that, so that it allows that. And as you point out, Neil, yes, we already have the statutory authority to do that anyway. But I don't want it to be a mandate and I don't feel that it should be even a recommendation of this organization, just that it exists as a way for people, for, for school boards who want to, to do that.
Okay. Kevin?
Kind of a process question. So, we're talking about superintendents and we're talking about the state, which is far beyond the control of a school board or the V S B A. So, I think we need to have some sort of overarching statement, if you will, or something about how, how this gets affected through, presumably through school, school boards. But without, without some overarching, how, how this will become into effect, it's, we're just, we've got three, three ideas here and none of them are within the jurisdiction necessarily of a school board, perhaps.
Yeah, so I guess some clarification. The way that I see it here is we are trying to this evening develop guidance that the V S B A would offer school boards throughout the state regarding their role at this moment in time. I'm not looking to approach the A O E or the legislature or the governor for some change in statute to force boards to implement a certain way of doing things. I'm merely trying to get this body to see if there's consensus around, you know, if, if a board member calls Sue and is saying to Sue, Sue, this is a crazy time. You know, my board is having a hard time navigating, you know, how our relationship is with the superintendent, what sorts of decisions we're supposed to be making around this reopening plan. What are your, what's your guidance on this? What do you, how do you suggest that we handle ourselves in this, in this matter? This is what I'm trying to get to tonight, and it's in part a response to Dan's request to our organization to provide feedback on what did we think about his guidance? So, I think it's a bit, it's not as direct, I think, maybe, Kevin, as what you're thinking. It's a little bit more softer than that. It's, I can't, I can't think of a better term for it actually than just trying to develop guidance from the V S B A on this matter.
Okay, I mean, that, that gives sort of an overarching intent, I think, for question one and two. Number three is a little bit harsher, I think, in order, how to come about that, maybe?
Thanks. I want to see if any other folks have reaction to Dan's comments. So Dan, essentially, I think what you're saying is you don't want number one at all.
No, I'm not saying that, but I think if Kevin's statement came first, which is to say, V S B A has met and has discussed guidance that might be useful for school boards around the state if they're having a hard time navigating the school reopening. And here are some things that a school board could do. And we have seen that they've been useful in some places. If, if that statement came first, then I think you could say one possibility would be to give operational decision-making authority to superintendents. I guess I would modify that to say in, to varying degrees depending on the board and the superintendent. Then, then I would be happy with that, but as long as it doesn't appear that it's a recommendation for all school boards to simply do that.
This is Colleen. If I could just weigh in on this key point, I've been a board member for a long time and I've seen boards go through cycles of high functioning and low functioning. And sometimes, for whatever reason, a somewhat low-functioning board just has a really hard time coming together on agreement. And when the rules are not clear about roles and responsibilities, it can take months, if not years, to work through. So I strongly advocate for having a clear response to Secretary French's statement. I am one of the board members who have received numerous emails about various opinions about what should happen in the schools with, you know, emails coming, you know, coming back from the state essentially because nobody wants to respond to anything. So, you know, I think that we really do need to have a strong statement that captures the specific roles and responsibilities of a board and a superintendent. And it's really hard when those lines get blurred. So with whatever we come out with, I somehow want to capture that the board has a role and we have to stay in our lane. And the superintendent, with all that expertise, knows how to delegate authority. So I'm, I'm supportive of the first statement.
Thank you. Anyone else in? Anyone else that in, I will add that I can't see all of the faces right now of the document. So if you have something to say, I guess, go ahead and chime in. I see.
This is George.
George.
Sorry, I don't have the little blue hand. Anyway, I I think with what I'm hearing, it tells me. We're not going to tell somebody to give authority, but that's our recommendation. Certainly, we might want to emphasize, continue to monitor what the superintendent is doing. But also have something in there about the needs to be nimble and quick. In case of a change in the situation with the virus. And our recommendation to be nimble is to let one person, the expert superintendent. Make those decisions with the board's monitoring. That's it.
Thanks, George. Want to go to Adrian?
George, you actually said that exactly the way I wanted to. I I think I also support. Basically, that first sentence, give operational decision making authority to the superintendent. I think they are in a position to be able to speak to all the stakeholders. And the board's duty is to make sure that they do that, to make sure that what we expect them to do is what they do. I mean, we can set up parameters that, you know, that we want them to include in their decision making, you know. These these groups, but but somebody has to make the decision. And I mean, I was sort of making a joke before, do you want to get called at 10 o'clock at night? But I don't think this is significantly different in some regards to, you know, the the idea of who's going to call the snow day. Do you call every board member and say, so how does it look at your house? What do you think? Do your kids want to stay home today? I mean, I I think. When you have a decision making by committee for something as important as this. You're going to end up with. Either decisions that don't get made at all or that are are made poorly. I think oversight of the superintendent is key, but you need to let them go.
Thanks, Mark Clough.
I was just thinking by example. I I would, I I think it's, it wouldn't be the board's, I'm just kind of struggling with what operational decision making means. And what the scale and scope of that is. It it wouldn't be right for a board to say, hey, do the hybrid model. I mean, there has to be a lot of values like Clarence has discussed with some of the challenged students as part of that decision. It would be very unfair for the board just to push down one of the models. Without a discussion back and forth, which we all hope we have with a superintendent. But but what does operational decision making mean to what extent? And I think maybe the modeling is is maybe the biggest thing, a joint, a joint decision. So I got.
Thanks. Any other input on this number one item? So I'm going to go back to this one more time because. I I do get a sense that I'm hearing two different things, right? On the one hand, I hear. Dan, who is, and Dan, please correct me if I am not capturing your sentiments correctly on this. But I get the sense that. Your preference would be that the V S B A does not. Endorse number one as a suggested method of operation.
I think that's correct, nor is it discouraging number one.
See, so I think here's where I'm getting stuck, right? So when a board member calls Sue and says, we are having a really hard time, what should we do? What's the answer, Dan?
So is there going to be a model policy which would, which would do number one essentially? If so, then Sue could say, we have a model policy if you choose to to do number one.
I I guess the part where I'm struggling, right, is that they need help with the choice.
That should be theirs, in my opinion.
This is Colleen. I'm wondering if what Dan is suggesting is something that's more of a preamble. And I'm going back to a comment that Lori made earlier that's kind of sticking with me about a precedent. Of the secretary giving authority to a board or telling boards what to do when the board already has. The statutory authority to do what we do. And so I I'm I'm wondering if perhaps there's some kind of preamble. That captures the existing roles and responsibilities. And it's not going back to the secretary, asking the secretary. For. Authority about what the role of a board is.
Yeah, actually, so Colleen, you made me think of it. Sue, can you remind me, I thought that the model policy that we were looking at as it relates to. The board superintendent role, did that have language into it that was specific to the pandemic? To the current situation that we find ourselves in?
The one that's under development, the draft?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, it specifically says that it's only in effect during the state of emergency.
Dan, would that change your view if you knew that this guidance was in the context of the current state of emergency? And not just normal guidance that we've, I want to make sure that we're talking about, like, it's, we're not suggesting that this be the normal mode of operation for boards. You know, under normal circumstances.
I I don't think so, because a a number of people have talked tonight about having a good relationship with their superintendent. Feeling like things are working well and they like the back and forth and appreciate the fact that all, all parties are at the table on it. So I honestly, I don't see a differentiation between COVID related and non-COVID related here. But I I will say again that I like. What Colleen just said and what sort of what Kevin was saying before. About having some sort of text narrative that comes before all of this. I I think that makes a huge difference. If if a school board gets a a narrative. And then these possible actions after that, that makes a big difference to me. But I don't mean to to monopolize the discussion here. I appreciate your reaching out to me, Neil, but I I will, unless asked, I'll I'll listen for a while.
All right, I got some hands up. Let me go to Jim Salzkeber.
There we go. Okay, just a couple of, a couple of my, well, my first and minor thing. Since we, you know, this now says, give operational decision making authority to superintendents. And we've talked a little bit about what's that mean? I just thought I'd take us back to the actual language from the secretary. Which says, you know, describe parameters for instructional dispositions. So in this case, I think it's a little bit more specific. What he's asking about. The, yeah. Yeah, describe the parameters for address in instructional dispositions is is down to the specific models that you're using. I also think that, you know, it, I think it, while it, I guess personally, I think. You know, for us, giving, giving that sort of decision making, the superintendent makes sense. And I I hear what Dan's saying about, you know, not every board is going to feel the same way. And I think that, you know, clearly also going back to the language from from Dan, it was, you know, either. You know, said. School board should either describe the parameters for instructional disposition through policy themselves. They make the decision or they delegate the authority through administrative procedure. So, you know, it's really kind of, well, we can, you know, to me, it's like, we can say we. Perhaps if we, if somebody asked, we could say, you know, giving operational decision making authority or or, you know, or the. Delegating authority for administrator, you know, pre procedures. Would to the superintendent will allow them to make adjustments, you know, on an ongoing basis. And you can try to set what, you know, how they communicate with you. If you want, you can hold on to that that authority. But you're going to have to be, you know, the board is going to have to be able to make each adjustment to to the policy. So it's just, just ensuring that boards understand what they're signing up for. Either they're giving, you know, significant power to the superintendent to to make changes on on a, without. Advance approval from the board or the board saying, you know, you have to come to us first before you make a change.
Thanks, Jim. Lori?
So we wouldn't be in this position if if Secretary French hadn't, number one, sent an email in response to a. Assume a voter taxpayer that said, oh, by the way, if you have any problems, talk to your school board. Instead of the superintendent. And second, also with the July 15th. Hybrid learning guidelines suggested that school boards take on these responsibilities. So I think the responsibility of the V S B A is to address what the Secretary of State has said, even though they're. Even though he's asking us to address it after he's already said it. So. He has said these things, right? These are the things that we should be responsible for. So then the V S B A is saying, okay, Secretary French says, these are the things we should be responsible for. And since he's saying that, you can either, like Jim was saying, adopt a policy that says you're giving all the. Responsibilities to the superintendent, or you can accept the responsibility of yourself. But you have to actually, we believe as a V S B A, we believe it's best if you take a position. One way or the other, because that's what it sounds like Secretary French is saying. So that our citizens, our voters, understand that the Secretary of Education is saying, you people, you school board members. Are going to take responsibility for this, or you're going to pass it off to your superintendent. Period, end of sentence. And so that's what I think Secretary French is saying. That's what I think I hear everyone else saying. Secretary French is saying, if the V S B A board agrees that that's what Secretary of French is saying, then we need to address. What Secretary French is saying and how school boards to address that is, one, adopt the policy that gives it to the superintendent. Or two, you take it on yourself.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate that, Lori, and it was something that I was thinking about as well, too, is that. You know, maybe we're looking at a scenario here where V S B A has. You know. Guidance and the guidance differs depending on which route you decide you want to take, right? So so one is a scenario where the, maybe the board wants to retain some of that decision making authority. And then just recognize what that means for boards in terms of, you know. Creating and passing policy to address things. But I think it also requires then boards to acknowledge that. You know. They become, you know. A potential roadblock in the expedited decision making tree that might be necessary, given the conditions of the pandemic. Or the other scenario that they could follow, the other path that they could follow is to provide to the superintendent the authority to make those decisions. And and so, you know, maybe we're looking at a, at a, like an A B sort of thing with the S B A providing guidance in this area. David Chandler.
Okay, well, I was just gonna, I think you all have covered it. I was just going to suggest that. I did sort of prepare a kind of preamble, and it sounds like a preamble could be very helpful. But I think you've pretty well stated it, Neil. My preamble is more along the lines of looking at the question of. Because we're facing this COVID crisis, what tools, support and resources do schools, boards, administrators really need? And recognizing that one size does not fit all. And recognizing that some of the things that are most important, and these have been stated before. Were the safety of our students and teachers and faculty, I mean, and staff. The optimal learning and the health of our, of so those same groups of people. And optimal learning opportunities for our kids is number one. And then the ability of each school to make decisions that are appropriate to their area. And seemed to me that those kinds of things would be what what you would say. That's, that's the basis on which I was trying to outline things from the beginning, is that you would start with a preamble along those lines. And then you would say, given that circumstance, it seems that, one, it makes sense. Or I guess you can word it the way you worded it, Neil, which is, you can go, A, make all the decisions yourself as a board or. Or B, give the operational decision making to the experts, person you hired for the job. And then go on with the other things that I suggested. So that's it from here.
Thanks, David. Mark, is your hand still up because you have something to add, or was it just up from before? Mark Clough.
Still up from before.
Okay. Let me see, so would anybody here be opposed to the, to this A B scenario? So the idea that, you know, for those boards that want to. You know, one way to approach this is to delegate the authority to the superintendent to make those decisions. And then for those boards that would rather be more involved. Then I think the guidance from V S B A is, and I think you really need to entertain some policy in the areas that. You're going to be asked to opine and decide on, because absent that, you're you're going to be in a pretty difficult position. And then I think maybe what I'm hearing on top of, shouldn't say on top of that. But that applies to both the A and the B scenario is that boards need to have a. They need to be very tight with their superintendents as far as communication goes and exchange of thoughts and ideas. Because in both of those scenarios, that that collaboration needs to to be there. Am I capturing these things correctly? Michelle?
Hi, thanks, Neil. I think you are doing a great job of keeping up with. Everyone's contributions. I just wonder, I I've heard a few people. Make strong statements about not wanting to. Delegate authority to superintendents or maybe even that they. They might be willing to, but they don't want to tell other boards that they should delegate their authority. But I I don't, because I guess I'm new to this board. I'm not sure whether we're striving for consensus here or. Whether there is a possibility of the board voting on this question. Of, you know, do we have just three people who think that authority should not be delegated? Or is it more of a split than that?
I I think. I I appreciate the point that you made. I I think what we're settling on here, I think, is a a a. A set of guidance that actually might be acceptable to. everyone, that it seems, I'm hoping covers the concerns that everyone might have brought to the table, but I see Clarence waving at me, so I'm going to give him an opportunity.
I think I'm unmuted now, right?
Correct. You're good to go.
I liked your last point there, Neil, about the A and B, and if you're going to have the B scenario, you're really, it really needs to be supported by a, a policy on, on what's going on. So it's not a fly by night outfit, you know, I think, I'm forgiving that to the superintendent to do, do the work, but there's some things that as a board, he should be aware of to, to consider in making his decisions. Points that the board itself would have. I personally, if we need more money, I'll overspend the budget. If you've got something that really needs to be done, if it's going to be positive for the kids. Or I'll agree with cutting something else, you know? Those kind of decisions, I think the board ought to make and just give the power to the superintendent to implement them. And I think that your statement captures that. That, that A and B scenario, you could just automatically grant it all to the superintendent, or you can grant qualified areas. You just qualify it. That's, and I think that covers Dan's question, too. It doesn't force anybody to do it. But, you know, and if it works good for a whole mess of superintendents to get together, that's great. But if it doesn't work for somebody, there ought to be a vehicle that the board can say, hey, for us, this just doesn't make sense. Can we do this a little differently? And accomplish the things we need to, we're there for the kids. One, get them their education and do it the best possible way. It's the cheapest way for the taxpayers.
Thanks, Clarence. You know, I, I am thinking that this A B guidance, I think, might cover the, the differing viewpoints here on this board, and I'm hoping that it does it collectively. And I think that the guidance married with the model policy that we're working on might be a good, a, a good way to satisfy the differing opinions, not only of this board, but even of the folks that may end up contacting us for some guidance on this. I want to just ask Sue really quick. Would it be preferred to have this decided in the form of a motion this evening?
I'm just trying to think what the motion would be. It's pretty, but I, you, you probably could come up with one. I think, I think it is that way, we're very clear what the board's decision is.
Okay. If that is the case, then I want to see if we can leverage our fancy technology here, so that if we're trying to wordsmith a resolution, people don't need to remember it in their heads as somebody shouts it out. But let's see if we can give this a go.
I would move to adopt your, your provision for A and B as I read it. Does that work for you?
Where are you reading it, Clarence?
For those anyone opposed to delegating it directly to the superintendent, for those that want to delegate. Those that want to be more involved in the area of policy and A and B need to have tight communication in collaboration with the superintendent. I thought policy was written in there someplace.
I might have missed a few words along the way. I was trying to type fast.
The V S B A supports an, an A and B type scenario policy that could qualify areas.
So this is Lori. I have something. I think it's really important that we all start, anything that we start with is that these decisions are based on what we believe is best for our students. And so no matter what we do, I think it's really important to start with that. I also need to, I also think we should include information that the Secretary of Ed has provided us guidance on what he thinks the board's responsibility is. And the V S B A believes that the board's responsibilities are to either delegate the responsibility of choosing learning method to the superintendent, or accept the responsibility of determining a hybrid method, or whatever method they determine. And to make policy for it. And the V S B A will be working their tails off. Thank you very much, staff, Sue, everybody. To provide the support that the, each board is going to need in order to implement the decision. Either of the decisions.
This is, this is Colleen. I just want to add that I think Lori made a very important point, and it gets back to something you had said right at the beginning, Neil, and that is giving feedback about the, the timeline of when this came to the V S B A. And Lori, you said something about the, the V S B A needs to decide whether to accept, or, and then you went on to say something else, but I, I think that word was appropriate, and maybe that's not the word, but that the tone that the V S B A board is, is taking into consideration what the secretary put forward to the board.
I, I really think that the, the only, yes, I agree with you, Colleen. I think the only reason we're having this conversation is because of what the secretary has decided. So we need to, we need to communicate to all our boards that we understand that.
So I'm wondering if maybe it would be, this is just an idea, it would, would it be simpler to have separate motions, one that responds to the secretary and one that says what we're going to do?
This is Dan. I have a, a motion that I have put together in chat. Can I put it up on chat for people to, to look at? Sure. Everybody see chat?
We have a motion on the floor already.
It, it, I didn't complete it. Kevin.
Okay.
I got lost in the middle and it wasn't seconded, so it, it, it really wasn't, it got too complicated, more than I thought it was going to be when I started. So I, I'll look at Dan's motion and either go wherever it went.
Just put it on the shared document. Bottom there. I copied it from chat, put it in there.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah, thanks, Carrie. It's, it's on the fly, but.
Yeah, I think, Dan, for me, I, part of the struggle that I have with this is I'm trying to see if we can capture the language related to the A B scenario, because I worry that a motion that just uses the terms A B scenario, nobody's going to know what that means.
Right, yeah.
Right? And so I, I think somehow we need to, somehow we need, I think, capture the essence of this a little bit better if we can. And, and I might lean towards Sue's suggestion that there be one, one motion related to the, the V S B A's reaction to Dan's comment, and second be the V S B A's guidance as it relates to school board authority during the pandemic.
So I, this is Lori Childers. I'd like to make a motion, Neil, that the board give authority to Neil and Sue and to come up with language regarding our difficulty with the situation that we have been put in, based on his timing and all the stuff Neil said earlier, that I'm not going to say so well. That's the motion.
It has to refer, it has to mention Secretary French.
I meant to say that, and if I didn't, that, that, what, what the V S B A needs to do is respond to Secretary French regarding the situation that we've been put in because of, he didn't communicate to us before the manifesto came out. And he's giving us this authority without us even knowing we had the authority. I'm not saying it very well, I'm sorry, but you guys could help me.
That's okay, Lori. I appreciate the effort, and I do understand that your motion making, decision making powers at nine o'clock are probably not as sharp as they were at six. So we all get it.
Thank you.
Am I still unmuted?
You are. Go ahead.
I think Lori's suggestion is that she started making motion is, is, is pretty good. We could be here quite a while to word, wordsmith a couple of motions to make this fit. I think you've got a lot of input from a lot of members, and I think you could draw something together that makes sense, even if it's two or three different motions and suggestions, and you could send those out to me, to be thumbs up or thumbs down from, from all the board members, everyone that's had, had the benefit of the discussion, so they'd know where, where they're coming from. But you could word, you could word it so that, that A B thing, it's not A and B, it's something that, that, that's a definition that makes sense. And I agree with you. Trying to wordsmith that at nine o'clock at night, it just doesn't come very easily. And I think with the, the staff could put their, their heads together with you, and it could get something to to send out, and if it, if it needs a formal approval after it's gone out for informal polls to membership, I'm sure the executive committee could have a brief online meeting and finish it up, I would think. If, if had to be. I don't know what Sue thinks about that, but with the information you have tonight, would that make your job easier to put something in writing that we all could adopt?
I think it would be more than one document. I think it would be a communication to Secretary French. And then it would be the the guidance that we, we would be writing. Is that what you're, is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Whether it takes.
Can I add that delegation versus non delegation, or delegate versus not delegate, rather than A and B? Because that's essentially what we're saying. You have to take a position.
Yeah, but I, I'd like to give some people a chance to work on that when it, it's not nine o'clock and we worship, everybody had some input that goes a little differently. But we're, we're all trying to get around the same thing. Some people are saying, what's going on? Just works great. No problem. Go ahead. And, and others are saying, wait a minute here, I, I want to know a little more before I give that away, you know?
So, so I withdraw my motion. And I like Clarence's suggestion. I kind of think this is important enough, maybe not, just to have another meeting, just to see, I don't know.
That's fine, too. But when we have a document that we could work on, that we don't have to try to wordsmith something as it goes along. And several of us tried it, and it, it's just not as easy as it fall in place as it might.
Yep. Thanks, that, I do want to, Amy has had her hand up for a while. Amy?
Hi, thank you. So just the fact that we're, we as a board are having, it's challenging to even come up with a motion on how to proceed is indicative of what individual boards, that, that, that challenge at the local level. And it's, you know, what, what Dan was saying that we can't tell boards that they have to give to delegate authority, that they have to make that choice, that also the, the same challenge that we're having now is going to be it, every, every board across the state is going to be having this same conversation of, well, what do you think we should do? And they're going to be, just like my board last night, going back and forth, and at 10:30 at night, not getting anywhere. It's, I, I think that all of this has shown that even the boards who felt they were getting along and working pretty well, that there's a little bit of dysfunction everywhere. And I know that doesn't solve or answer any questions. It's more just voicing my frustration with the whole thing. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Amy. I'm going to take a slightly contrary, I, I actually don't think we're that far off from figuring this out. I, I actually think that what I heard was broad support for this A B notion when it came to the governance piece of things. And I also think that there is support. And Lori, I actually don't think that your motion was that far off of authorizing Sue and I to respond to Secretary French regarding the, the, the timing of his guidance. And also the substance of his guidance, right? And, and if, if the board is comfortable in delegating that authority to Sue and I, given the context of the discussion that we've had this evening, and I guess that's the big F, right? So if the board trusts Sue and I to be able to convey the board's positions that were made this evening, I, I think that we can at least get a motion on that piece. But I would say, Sue, please correct me if you think I'm overstepping here, and, but I don't think we're that far away.
No, I don't think you're overstepping. Can I add a comma to that motion after timing?
You can.
Thank you. This has something to do with the slippery slope that we're concerned about. That, that needs to be in your communication with Secretary French. At least it has to.
Yeah, so could I make a recommendation that, just after timing, I would just maybe put a comma in there and add the words difficulty with timing, comma, content, and execution.
Perfect. So moved.
Yep, you moved it, but we would need a second.
Adrian's second.
Second, yeah.
Is there any further discussion on this motion? So this one would only be related to us responding to Dan regarding his guidance. This is not the, the, the superintendent board relationship piece. Mark Schuber?
So I, I just want to verbalize my opinion that what Secretary French gave us was nothing more was nothing more than what we already had and knew we could do. So I guess I'm not so sure that content needs to be addressed. The timing, absolutely. But I think he just verbalized the choices that the board already had.
Thanks for that point, Mark. I think I would still go back to the point that I made before, that for yours and a well-functioning board with a great relationship with the superintendent, I think the content to you struck you as a non-issue. I think for other boards in other parts of the state, they, his message may have brought to light something that they hadn't previously considered.
I guess my only response to that is I feel like what he gave us was an A B option, which is essentially what we're talking about in the other motion that hasn't come up yet. So I'll just, I'll leave.
Yeah, and I think part of the challenge for me was is that the board's role in all of this wasn't highlighted by the A O E until the middle of July. And so there's certainly the timing piece of it, right? But it was the content of the thing that he put out, coincident with the timing that he did it, that was the cause of the frustration for me.
For me, too.
And so I don't, I definitely see your point, Mark, but I think absent the content, right, then you lose the context of the whole thing. And so I do think that there's an aspect of the content of the message that does matter.
This is Colleen, and I would just like to remind us that we, as board members, we had been told since March that leadership for how the schools were going to operate was going to come from the agency. There was never any conversation about boards are going to take this on. I mean, our board had many arguments just about food service, and I cannot imagine what's coming before us going forward. So I think content is very important here.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Neil, Sandra just alerted me that according to her notes, Lori had withdrawn her motion. But perhaps she made it again at some point? She may have.
I did. I made it a second time. I did make it a second time. Thank you, Sue.
Okay, sure, thank you.
I think it was after we added the words on there, then I think I heard Lori say, you know, so moved.
That is correct, Neil.
So who, we had Lori make the motion. Did we have the second, I think, was from Amy possibly, or?
I did, too. This is Nancy.
Okay, so as long as.
It was Nancy that seconded it?
Well, I think there was about three of us that did it all at the same time, so pick and choose.
As long as we've got one in the notes, in the minutes.
I have Adrian as seconding it, but I might have been wrong.
No, I think she did, too.
I think we all said it.
Okay.
If there is no further discussion, then I do want to call the question. All those in favor with an I?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The I's have it, unanimous. Now, if, I know it's late, folks, but I actually think maybe we can get through this other one as well.
So Neil, again, I put in chat a motion similar to the one we just made. It's asking Sue and Neil to craft the document based on the working page that Sue has been keeping track of us here. So it doesn't have a lot of specificity in it, but I think it is the motion that that would basically turn over to you and Sue, the job of putting together the comments that were made tonight.
So I'm reading what you've got here, Dan, and this, unless I miss it, this seems more pertinent to the one that we just did, rather than the guidance one, or am I not following correctly?
Well, I think we're providing the guidance based on the letter from him, but it doesn't need to be included in here. That part could be, certainly could be amended out.
Yeah. I guess what my one concern is that I think it would be more than just a document, right? Because I think this is actually going to serve as the foundation for, you know, V S B A guidance moving forward during the rest of the pandemic and assistance to school boards when they come to us. I'm not trying to dismiss your motion, Dan, but I just want to make sure that we don't box ourselves in a little bit here.
Series of documents? And then, and then leave out addressing the letter from Secretary French?
Dan hasn't got a second yet. Can we, can we get a second from somebody?
Well.
Should it die without a second?
Yeah, I don't think it's quite ready yet, Lori, because of Neil's concerns. Anybody got a better one?
How about just changing the word document to guidance and taking out the information about the letter?
To craft guidance, making recommendations for how to address.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to ask Carrie to put it into the document so I can keep track of what you're saying, Dan.
I did. It says Dan's motion. Can you see it down there? It's right after that. That's what I copied in.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't scroll down enough. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Dan?
Yes?
That's the correct one?
Yes, it is. And Mark suggests instead of a document, it's a guidance. I think I would leave in there a letter from Secretary French and recommendations for how to address it. I mean, that's the point of why we're here tonight.
So it's not actually the letter from Secretary, it's the it's the healthy and safe read, you know, the guidance that the agency.
The July, yeah, the July 15th guidance.
Right, right. More than it is the letter.
Strong and healthy start.
Thank you, George.
So who's typing there, Sue? Is that you?
Yes. Did I type the right thing?
Addressing the July 15th guidance. Right, yes.
Okay.
And David, are you comfortable with reference to you being the one who sort of formulated the three?
I don't care. It's fine. But it was actually pulling together comments, so.
We may want to include the July 23rd guidance also, because I think both of those are, have language about the school boards.
Yes, absolutely, yes. And then in reference to both of them, Sue, maybe say from A O E.
Then it would be and to make.
Mm-hmm. Recommendations for how to address them.
That whole piece is too loosey-goosey for me. And makes.
Can we put the agency of education before July 15th? Addressing the agency of educations, whatever it is, are they directives or guidance, or whatever they are? Letters?
Missives.
Missives.
Part of the point of this, making it like this is, because what we're doing is authorizing Sue and Neil to do the difficult work here.
Yeah, and I'm thinking this is probably going to get public.
A question. Was it the governor, I'm trying to remember, there's been so much communication the last couple of days. Was it the governor who did the mandate that all schools will open on the 8th? Or was that A O E? And the governor, or?
I think that was, I believe it was the governor, yes.
It was the governor. I listened to it this morning, the whole thing.
Okay, that's what I thought, and it, in some ways, it feels like we've been told that it's the school boards who are responsible for putting all of this together, yet we are now told by the governor that all of our buildings will be open for some form on September 8th. And it just seems kind of contradictory.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Perhaps that should be added in there, in the governor's directive about opening schools. I mean, so that, you know, the school boards have to respond to the agency of Ed and the governor. And now all of us in boards have this responsibility when board members have not been involved in any of the conversations for the most part. I mean, we've been involved in conversations. Our superintendent has kept us in the loop, but we have not been part of any decision-making body.
Correct.
Okay, what I'm wondering here is if I take a look at the language that we've got on the table right now, and right after, so I'm going to propose some language to come right after, make recommendations. And that would be, and to make recommendations regarding the authority of school boards during the pandemic, consistent with the discussion at the V S B A meeting of July 28th.
That looks good, Neil, and I like it because this is all on the same page. The whole discussion has been, you know, notes have been typed as we went along.
If we are comfortable with the word smithing, then I would be willing to entertain a motion.
Neil, can I just clarify? Do I have it there correctly? I didn't take out any words. I just added what you.
Yeah, sorry. I would strike the remainder of that sentence.
For how to address them?
Yes.
Okay.
Does this still include using the three points, including numbers two and three?
Yes, it does.
With that in mind, then, on number three, I believe initially we had talked about food security for the students, but that's not spelled out. Should it be?
We could simply add that under three above. Because that's what they will reference when crafting this.
Yeah, I'm looking at three above, and it doesn't have anything about food security.
Yeah, so I will be completely honest with you guys, is that I don't feel that this board fully discussed two and three this evening. And I'm not sure that, you know, is there broad support for collaboration on this? Because, I mean, I'm okay including it if folks here say that they're all good with it. I'm just not certain that we actually spent a whole lot of time discussing two and three.
So I, this is Lori again. I'm, this is a big thing, and we are delegating a lot of responsibility to you and Sue and the staff to get this done. And I really think it's important that the board come back together and look at what you have completed before we publish. And I think that will help us. I think you should consider two and three, and because it was part of the conversation, not a big part. But I think the board should have the say on the final product.
And when you say product, what are you thinking?
Well, the final guidance that the V S B A is going to be giving to school boards and any other information you guys put together in that final guidance. I just think it would be important for the whole board to know.
I just thought that was part of the deal here. They're going to create this for our review and approval.
Which I think we can do. I think, you know, as Neil said, we haven't given him that much guidance. So I think, you know, things like, I guess I look at two and I see support, collaboration, and discussion. You know, I think we're supportive of it, we're not mandating it. So I think that gives the flexibility and probably accommodates most people. The third one, you know, I think, you know, while George had the good point about not food security, there's a lot of other stuff that's not in there either. We're just looking for resources to be available as needed to meet with the impact of, you know, this, essentially, the emergency, you know.
Also, you could talk about equity. I'd make the suggestion that maybe go back to the executive committee after this full board discussion was good, but to do this again, I'd throw that out, goes back to the executive committee for publishing. You know, I accept, I think it was maybe Neil's point, number three really isn't guidance. You know, we are creating a guidance document or a series of documents. Number three is kind of like a request. Yes, we'd like to make that, but that's not addressed to school boards. It really should be addressed back to the A O E or to the federal government or somebody. Seems like maybe it is outside the purview of what these guidance documents should be concluding.
Maybe it's suggesting that we all, you know, we all have an interest in ensuring there are resources there for us during this time.
Yeah, I mean, to be quite honest with you guys, I would be, I would be very happy if we got resolution just on number one this evening, and I was hopeful that the motion that we have on the, or that we might about to have on the table, is satisfactory to board members tonight that covers number one. If folks want to continue the discussion, I'm more than happy to bring items two and three back to another board meeting. But if we could leave the meeting tonight with resolution on number one so that Sue and I can begin the process of, you know, finalizing the model policies and drafting the guidance that we would want to issue and responding to Dan, that would be great, because I do, a certain aspect, I feel like we're running out of time here, right? Not only just in this meeting tonight, but in the ability to get back to Dan and the ability to get information out to school boards.
Neil, this is Mark Schaubert. I personally think that two is part and parcel of one. Then, and it's not giving as, I forgot who somebody mentioned a few minutes ago. We're not telling the boards to do something. We're just essentially making a suggestion there. Three is not directed towards boards, so I think that would be a discussion for a very different topic. But I'd be in favor of leaving two in.
So this is Colleen, and it may be late, and I may be forgetting or have missed a change of direction. But when David originally presented this, these three bullet points, it was in response to the question, But when David originally presented this, these three bullet points, it was in response to the question, what, what should we tell Secretary French about what the V SBA wants? And we want the agency to, you know, whatever the, you know, the three bullet points were. But I thought originally this was, what is it? What is the ask of the agency from the V SBA? And if it's not, that's fine. I, I just.
Yep. David, did you want to respond to that?
No, that sounds perfectly appropriate, but I'm happy with whatever we resolve. If it's easier to just go with the first resolution, that's fine. I don't have any ownership of this.
Yep. So I, what I will add to that then, for both Colleen and David and everybody else to sake, is that what I was hoping to walk out with tonight was an answer to number one. If it were only eight o'clock right now and we had satisfied number one, I was going to move right into numbers two and three. Like if we could have knocked them all off tonight, I would have done that, right? But now I'm looking at a clock that's telling me it's a little after 9:30. And I would go back to my original, like, if I can end the meeting tonight with board resolution on number one, I'm a happy guy. And, and we'll move forward. And if I need to, we'll bring back two and three.
So Sue, I would like to make a motion, if you can retype that bottom line, use the first point suggested by David, explaining the AB possibility for, for number one. And then erase all the rest of it after number one, put a period there. And I so moved.
I second. Amy?
Moved by Dan, seconded by Amy. Are there any comments?
I, this is Adrian. I just wanted to put out there real quick. I'm wondering whether, you know, and, and this is sort of beyond where we are right now. Maybe we should just address number three as a resolution for the V SBA in ongoing conversations with the legislature and Dan French and the governor. And I fully support number one as written. I'll stop because it's too late and I'm no longer making sense.
But I'll second your motion there, Adrian, once we get done with this one.
I, Dan, to be quite honest, this is the last motion I'm entertaining.
Okay, that's it.
I will bring, I will bring three forward at another time. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Were you also going to address the governor's edict today in the first part of the sentence? Agency of educations, July 15th, and point your guidance and Governor Scott's moving the school year back? Or no?
I'm inclined not to because I didn't, there were a couple of points made this evening about it, but I don't know that there was a whole lot of discussion around the governor's announcement today and that the conversation tonight was more focused around the, the guidance from the Secretary of Education. But I will open it up if other folks think that that, I mean, listen, I will say by and large, I think superintendents across the state are okay with this move.
I think so too, yes.
Hey, Neil, this is Lori. I'd like to call the question.
All right. So without any further discussion, then we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Oh, Kim Gleason, you come on now? Now is when you join us?
I am so sorry, folks. I literally
Holy moly.
Just adjourned our board meeting that had 140 participants.
Oh, my gosh.
So that's a COVID win. People are able to participate very easily. These are remote meetings.
I want to, I want to thank the board this evening. I know that this was not easy. You know, it's even challenging, I think, to do it over, I, I think some parts of Zoom are easier, but some parts of Zoom just make this more difficult and more time consuming. But holy moly, I appreciate the effort that you guys put into this, your willingness to get together, to go through a late hour, to have to eat your dinner in front of the camera, to hide your beer or your glass of wine in a glass that doesn't look like it's a beer or a glass of wine. I appreciate it greatly from all of you.
I forgot that.
So thank you so much. And I will just say, I'm sorry to say that this is probably not the last time that we'll have to get together, maybe even on an emergent basis. But your input, I think, is extremely helpful and hopefully will get us all to a slightly better place. I'm not going to kid myself that we're going to solve this and this is going to be easy. Because this ain't going to be easy, folks. It's going to be hard. But we're gonna, we're gonna make it through and I really appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all in this together.
Thank you.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
See you later, folks.
Good night. Thanks.